Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us tonight at our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Lurie?
Here.
Manon?
Here.
Blad?
Here. Thank you. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for the invocation, which will be offered by Lieutenant Tammy Moore from the Salvation Army.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You just bow your head and pray. Father God, we thank you for each and every person in this room today, Lord, and we thank you for the leadership of our beautiful city of Pocatello and, Father, for all citizens concerned here today. And, Lord, my prayer is that today that we can do as your word requires of us, Lord, that each and every one of us, that we act justly and that we love mercy and that we walk humbly with you. We pray this in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you. I might add, before we move on, if you are here for Agenda Item Number Seven, it has been pulled from the agenda, and so if you're here, it will be put back on a future agenda. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Three, is a Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can't be moved to a separate Agenda Item. A, Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the clarification meetings and regular City Council meeting of March 7, 2019, and March 21, 2019. B, Treasurers Report. Council may wish to consider the Treasurers Report for March showing cash and investments as of March 31, 2019. Good evening, Joyce.
Good evening, Mayor.
Soon as you can get around that chair there.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you. Good evening, Dean Mayor and Councilmembers, Joyce Strishine, Chief Financial Officer for the City. Tonight I'm presenting the Treasurers Report for the month of March 2018. Okay. Total cash and cash equivalents represent 82 percent of the city's monies totaling $55,183,664. Total long-term investments represent 8 percent of the city's monies totaling $4,780,205. For total cash equivalents and long-term investments of $59,963 and $963,870. This amount is down $389,022 for the month of March. On page two of the report, I've highlighted key receipts for the month. We received airport grant monies, $24,130. Transit federal grant, $85,615. Transit State of Idaho grant, $222,678. And on page three of the report, I report on the trust funds. So, total cash and cash equivalents of $1,100,595. Then we had total long-term investments totaling $3,914,580. For total cash equivalents and long-term investments of $5,015,175. Total cash receipts for the month, $90,193. Total cash dispersments, $52,229. And then net change in long-term investments, a decrease of $12,873. On page four of the report, I report on the funds' cash balance at the end of March and the net change for the month. So, I've highlighted General Fund, which shows thorough at an ending cash balance of $14,546,064. And then the net change is a decrease of $983,059. On page five of the report is Discussion Analysis for Review. And then page six of the report is the Five-Year Trend of Cash Ending Balances. And, once again, this presents a very strong cash position for the city of Pocatello. And I've already told you, I've highlighted General Fund, and I've already told you what the cash ending balance was. We do have five funds that are negative, but those are covered by pending receipts. You have two. I'm sorry, that's three. Did I count that right? Three funds that are negative. And two of them are grant funds, and those are reimbursement bases, so we'll be seeing the grant monies come in, because you have to expend and then you get reimbursed. And the other one is on the animal shelter bond debt service, and we'll be receiving the monies to cover that in our July remittance from property tax, because we levy direct for that. And that concludes my report.
Super, any questions, Council, for Joyce? Thank you, Joyce.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
We'll move on to C, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of David Paccarotti to serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, replacing Dakota Bates, whose term expired. Mr. Paccarotti's term will begin April 19, 2019, and will expire April 19, 2021. D, Pocatello Arts Council Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Cameron Day to serve as a member of the Pocatello Arts Council, replacing Robin Lindbeck, who resigned. Mr. Day's term will begin April 19, 2019, and expire August 17, 2021. E, Pocatello Development Authority Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Matt Bloxum, Thomas Otway, Scott Smith, and Terrell Tovey to continue their services at Pocatello Development Authority Board. Mr. Tovey will continue his service as the Bennett County Representative. All terms will begin May 1, 2019, and expire May 1, 2023. F, Resolution Historic Preservation Plan. Council may wish to adopt a resolution providing an adoption of the Historic Preservation Plan. A public hearing on this matter was held on April 4, 2019.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Sir. We have a motion by Council President Johnston, and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll? It's gonna be one of those nights.
Johnson?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurie?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Four, is Communication and Proclamations. We do have one proclamation tonight. It will, before we get to that proclamation, I see we have a scout troop back in the back corner. How are you doing? Who's in charge back there? All right. Tell us where you're from.
We are, we are from Patrow County, Florida.
What troop number are you?
370.
370. Well, troop 370, there are a couple of seats up here if you wanted to come sit up front. There's a couple of them right there. You're welcome to sit down there. Thank you for joining us tonight. This is, this is awesome when you have a scout troop show up and they don't have their adult leader with them. That's cool.
He's dropped them off and left.
He's here? He dropped them off and left. He said, "I had enough."
He saw the length of the agenda.
Yeah. That's right. I love it. Well, we're glad you're here. Thank you for being here. We do have one proclamation. It is Portinata Valley Community Environmental Fair Day. It will be read by Councilmember Bina Manon.
Whereas a sound natural environment is the foundation of a healthy society and a robust economy, and whereas human activities around the world are causing climate change that threatens human health and our planet's ability to sustain a diverse community of life, and whereas the knowledge of ways to live in harmony with our environment and methods and technologies to reduce our carbon footprint already exists, and whereas local communities can do much to slow down the effects of climate change and contribute to building a healthy society by addressing issues such as energy use, transportation, personal habits, and consumption, and whereas there are sound economic, environmental, and social reasons for local governments to initiate energy efficiency and renewable energy practices, and whereas the environmental realities of our time require humans to make a dramatic shift in their relationship to the earth. Now, therefore, Mayor Brian C. Blad of the city of Pocatello does hereby proclaim Saturday, April 20, 2019, to be Portinata Valley Community Environmental Fair Day in Pocatello as part of the 49th Anniversary Earth Day everyday celebrations around the world. And he encourages our residents, businesses, and institutions to support the fair as well as make a commitment to undertake programs and projects that enhance our community's natural environment by reducing the city's carbon footprint and help build a sustainable community.
You're gonna come all the way up here.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Oh, hold it up.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Everyone, come sit there.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Five, is a Calendar Review. Council may take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that could be, should be called to their attention. On April 25, at 9:00 a.m., a budget development meeting. On May 2, at 9:00 a.m., will be a budget development meeting. At 5:30 p.m. will be a clarification meeting, and at 6:00 p.m. will be a regular City Council meeting. On May 9, at 9:00 a.m. will be a work session followed by a budget meeting. Other events will be April 20, Environmental Fair at Caldwell Park, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Citizens using the PRT fixed route or special services during the Environmental Fair will ride for free to and from Caldwell Park. April 20, Medicine Take-Back Day, part of the Environmental Fair. Law enforcement agencies will take back and safely dispose of unwanted medicines to keep them out of the water supply. April 27, Run With the Big Dogs Event. Contact the Animal Services for more information. The animal shelter will be closed at 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. to allow staff and volunteers to participate in the fun run. Also, on April 27, will be the HPC Annual Conference from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at ISU Pond Student Union Building. On May 1, Zoo Idaho will be open seven days a week. May 4, Portinata Valley Fun Run Series starts with the Law Day Run. Contact Parks and Recreation for more information. May 6 through 9 is National Water Week. 27th Annual Open House will be held at the Water Department, 1889 North Arthur Street. We've got a lot of things going on here. Annual Spring Cleanup at City Cemetery continues. Crews are removing and discarding all flowers and decorations. Cleanup is expected to continue through the end of April. The month of May is dog licenses will be half price. The Ross Park Master Plan comments will be reviewed through June 2. Did the HPC thing. Okay? All right. Thank you. Agenda Item Six, Public Hearing North Gate Urban Renewal Area Plan. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments regarding the proposed urban renewal plan for the North Gate Urban Renewal Project Plan of the Pocatello Urban Renewal Agency, AKA Pocatello Development Authority Agency. The plan proposes that the agency undertake an urban renewal project, including identifying public facilities for funding pursuant to Idaho Urban Renewal Laws of 1965, Chapter 20, Title 50, Idaho Code as amended. The plan being considered for adoption contains a revenue allocation financing provision pursuant to the Local Economic Development Act, Chapter 29, Title 50, Idaho Code as amended. That will cause property taxes resulting from any increase of equalized assessed, I don't know why we have to say so many things here, equalized assessed valuation in the excess of the equalized assessed valuation as shown on the base assessment roll of January 1, 2019, to be allocated to the agency for urban renewal purposes. The agency has adopted and recommends approval of the plan. I declare the public hearing open. The applicants.
Reminder, they have 10 minutes.
Oh, as a reminder, the applicant will have 10 minutes to present. Then we will have, staff will present, and then we will go into the testimonies.
I will start that seven minutes in.
Megan, we, oh.
I had a letter not here this morning.
Yeah. We have 10 minutes here, but our clock is set at three minutes, and so at seven minutes we will start that clock.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Megan Conrad. I'm an attorney at Elam &amp; Burke in Boise, Idaho, and I represent the Pocatello Development Authority on the creation and establishment of this North Gate project area. I have with me as well Phil Kushlon. He's the consultant that prepared the economic feasibility study from Kushlon Associates. So, thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me here today. I really appreciate it. I understand I have limited time constraints. I am a lawyer. I like to talk a lot, and I have very wordy slides, so I will, I will move quickly. I really wanted to start here with the understanding that the plan itself is a bulky document and has a number of attachments to it, and it covers a lot of material, but I've wanted to start with the timetable and the process to date, just so it shows visually, this is not something that occurred overnight. This actually started before Elam &amp; Burke became involved in 2018, but it started with a developer coming to the table and having interest in the establishment of a revenue allocation area, and that is what triggered the process. And because we're talking about a revenue allocation area, there are two phases to this process. There's the eligibility phase, which is phase one, where you go out and study a geographic area, and if that geographic area is deemed eligible under the law and the act, and the, once it comes before the City Council and it's deemed eligible, then the agency's directed to start the planning process, and that starts phase two. So, as you can see on here, the eligibility study was prepared in January 2018. It was reviewed by the agency board that same month. It was submitted also because it's a multi-jurisdictional project area. At the time, it covered the county. It also went to the county for its review and consideration as to whether or not an urban renewal project was warranted. That came to the City Council. The City Council reviewed and adopted a resolution making the findings and directing the agency to prepare a plan. The plan was drafted and reviewed at multiple public meetings, including two work sessions with both the Board of County Commissioners, City Council, and PDA. As part of the economic feasibility study, Leland Consulting was also retained to conduct a market analysis, which took a look at the information that was provided by the development team and also reviewed the market in the community as a precursor to making the findings set forth in the economic feasibility study. That process took a long time, from February to December, before the agency considered the plan for approval. Following that December 2018 time, the city of Chubak did annex over the interstate area, and so they were also looped into the process. So, as part of that, both the Chubak City Council and the Board of County Commissioners considered intergovernmental agreements with the Pocatello City Council and signed off on transfer of powers ordinance, and all of that occurred at open and public meetings. As part of the statutory process, the plan also stops at planning and zoning commission for a finding that the plan is in conformity with the comp plan of the city. So, the notice was published of this public hearing on March 15, and again, two weeks later, and today is the time set for the public hearing. So, this is, this is a lengthy process to get to where we're at now. Because this plan is somewhat different than the ones that this council has reviewed in the past, I will just quickly walk through some of the most pertinent provisions of the plan. Section 100 is the introduction, and it specifically references 502905, which identifies what information must be included in an urban renewal plan. There's a 10 percent limitation, which says that the collective values of the base assessment rolls cannot exceed 10 percent of the current taxable value of the city. A statement listing the kind and location of all proposed public work projects must be within, that are considered for within the revenue allocation area. An economic feasibility study. Detailed list of estimated project costs. A fiscal impact statement. A description of the methods of financing, the termination date, and the description of the disposition at termination of the plan. Just a quick note, this is a post-July 1, 2016 plan, so to the extent there are amendments undertaken or reviewed by the City Council and adopted by ordinance, that would have the effect of resetting the base value to the current assessed values at that time, which essentially would wipe out the revenue stream. So, that information has also been included in the plan. The proposed project area is 1,800 acres, 300 of which have been annexed into the city. It's north of Chubak Road and east of Interstate 15. As we have discussed at open meeting, the intent is as this property, as these properties develop, they will be annexed into the city at that time. The plan is one that proposes installation improvements to public infrastructure, including improvements to the interchange, the local road, and an extension of Olympus Drive, and water and sewer updates necessitated by the development in the area. So, one thing that's a little bit different about this plan is I would call it a developer-at-risk plan. The public improvements are to be first undertaken by the developer team, and to the extent revenues are received by the agency, they will be pursuant to an agreement, reimbursed back to the developers. And should the revenue allocation area be established as of January 1, 2019, and Mr. Kushlon will touch on this probably more as well, but increment, because of the taxing and levying process, the agency would not receive any revenue until there's value in the revenue allocation area. And so, it may be a year or two before there's actual dollars in the agency's coffers in order to reimburse the development team. Another comment is that an urban renewal plan is not a contract. It is, it guides development, it informs how development should occur, and what the relationship should look like with, between the agency and developers. But to the extent a plan is adopted, following that time period, there would be specific agreements that would be entered into with the development team that would specifically identify the relationship between the parties and how and what would be reimbursed and when.
Your three-minute timer's started.
Oh, thank you. Okay. I better jump to Phil here so that he can answer any questions, but when you're looking at impact on other taxing districts in general, there are a lot of, there is a lot of variables that make it difficult to predict what an impact is over the 20-year life. Again, an agency's not responsible for assessing values. It does not, is not a taxing district that is set by each individual taxing entity. And then Phil, do you want to make it on? These are essentially, for the purposes of the economic feasibility study, what we are looking at is what is the current levy rate and what is the anticipated development that occurs within the area?
Thank you, Megan. Your Honor. Again, my name is Phil Kushlon, Post Office, Parks, E463, Boise. And again, recognizing we're on a short string here on time, my role in this particular phase is basically look at an anticipated revenue stream coming from the taxing process and compare the 20-year cash flow coming from that and compare that to the amount of expenditures for public facilities that are anticipated by the developer. We went through a couple of iterations to kind of hone that down to a more manageable number than we started with, and basically, you add up one side, and you add up the other side, and if you add more money than you have expenditures, then it's economically good. And so, will we, I can make this go?
Those are your assumptions.
Okay. Now, this is the cash flow analysis. It goes on and on, but what I did is take each year through the life of the district and basically run a cash flow of money coming in and anticipated expenditures going out. Again, Megan indicated looking at an owner participation agreement. We have not provided resources for bond issues or interest. It's basically paid back at face value. And given all the expenditures that are anticipated, at the end of the process, we anticipate about a $3 million positive cash balance at the end of the process. You know, those numbers are gonna change, obviously, over time, but given that, we believe that, using the assumptions that we've brought forward to the analysis, that it does pass the test for analysis.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Phil, if you could go back to one of your earlier slides, it's the overview of the evaluations.
Yep.
My understanding is that the column that shows 306,533, I think it is?
Yes, sir.
That is what will be the value of this district that will be on city tax rolls when it comes in.
That is the value as it existed when the analysis started. That's a 2017 value from the assessor. To a large extent, I think almost totally, the area in question is subject to an agricultural property tax exemption, basically runs that value way down. What I did, recognizing that as the properties come out of their agricultural use and come to some other use, that ag exemption goes away, that increase in value actually accrues to the base, not to the increment. So, that number would grow, in my estimation, to about $15 million. So, that amount of money would not be just the $300,000 that would be accessible to the taxing entities over the life of the district. It'd be more like $15 million.
Okay. So, when the properties come on, that will be the value. You're estimating it to be approximately $16 million?
Yes.
When the fifth district launches, that'd be the base.
And that would happen over time.
Okay. I see you got a descending, it gets to $23,722,000 again.
Other questions?
That's the one I have.
Maybe one question.
Okay.
There are people in the audience tonight who think that this is going to impact the value and cause taxes to go up in other areas of the city. Would you care to comment on that?
Your Honor, Councilman, that's a subject that gets debated statewide almost annually in the State House. And generally, this is a reallocation of income that is derived. It's not a general increase in taxation, but what happens is as this value increases, it's not available to the general taxation of the taxing entities. So, as you know, the property tax system functions with a 3 percent increase each year maximum, and so, excuse me, the incremental amount of assessed value is not available to the general taxpayers for producing that 3 percent increase in revenue. So, what that does, it holds the tax rate up a bit slightly more than it would had this position not been in place. So, often you see tax rates actually decline, at least around the state, over time, and this might hold that tax rate slightly higher. But then generally, the values of this area is a relatively small portion of the total value of the city, so it's a fairly small impact on the tax rate. But there is, there's a legitimate impact on the rate.
More schools are needed, fire stations, police stations, public services. Who pays that burden? Who pays that burden?
Well, according to the statute, schools are not affected by the, by the process of tax increment. They've been exempted, so they basically function as they would with or without the district in place. As needs grow, and clearly the community is going to fund the basic services of the city, and that's, that's happened since incorporation, that will continue to happen. But the question is, if I'm interpreting incorrectly, there's going to be service demands by the areas that are developed here under this plan. Certainly, on those facilities that are utility rate-based, those will be funded by the normal rate base of the city charges, so there is no impact there. I think generally you find that new construction, say for street maintenance and so forth, is basically at a low level in the early years of these things, so your maintenance costs are relatively small. You may have an increase in cost dealing with parts maintenance and so forth, if there's large part spaces and so forth, that generally would tend to have a more immediate cost impact than some of the other things that are longer in terms of the nature of the quality of the infrastructure. You know, that would then fall to the general budget of the city to maintain those areas, if indeed they're accepted by the city as part of the system. That, I think, would be something that you could negotiate out with the development agreement. Is there a HOA or something, or homeowners association that would maintain it? But I think there's some, some different ways to approach those specific costs. I think you have to go through the analysis of understanding what those are and determine whether or not you've got the capacity to bear those costs on the budget. I understand that there's potential for closure of an existing district that might bring additional revenues in to offset these costs here, to then get one out of Idaho to the city. So there's some things at work here that we understand bring some new resources to the city that can offset those costs, and I think we've had conversations about those in the past. So while there is a slight impact, we think there are some mechanisms in place to respond to those. That answer your question?
Very nicely. Thank you so much.
Roger.
How many residentially-weighted TIF districts have you experienced being developed? Is it a normal thing or is it kind of abnormal thing?
Your Honor, Councilman, facetious, I'd say yes. Both.
Both?
It happens, I know NAPA has a project that included both commercial and industrial. Certainly, one I worked with in Boise had eventually quite a bit of residential developed there. Caldwell has some. Marion established a district recently that has some, quite a bit of residential in it. So it's, it's, you want to be, have a significant amount of commercial development just because of the way the Idaho property tax system works. If you're all focusing on owner-occupied, single-family residential or even condominiums, you've got a homeowner's property tax exemption, which then reduces the amount of money that comes to the city for responding to the needs of that, of that house, whether that's in district here or anywhere else in the city. So generally, as I look at these things, if you were to look at an exclusive district that was basically owner-occupied housing, it would be very difficult to produce resources to make that pay itself back. So you'd want to have some commercial value there to help.
And how do you see this district weighted? You did this study, and you had to give value to commercial versus residential. How do you see this district weighted?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, we looked at that question early on, because this is a big district, you know, there's no question about this being a large physical area. And we looked, could you just cut this off in the commercial area and then let the housing kind of fend for itself? And clearly, that wouldn't work if you needed the resources to fund the backbone of the facilities going up the hill there. We would not recommend that the process fund residential streets like you would normally have in a subdivision someplace. Those are normally developed by the developer, they pay for that. But the backbone stuff and the oversized utilities, you know, everything is legitimate to include here, but in order to accommodate that, we have the conversation with the PDA Board, and the only way the resources would be sufficient would be if it were to be appended to the commercial area down closer to freeway. That answer your question?
Yeah. Okay. So your study is essentially, well, it did, it just looked into the TIF district boundaries and how things would perform in there. You did not do an analysis beyond that district to see how this might impact Pocatello in general?
Your Honor, Councilman, yeah, the specific task was to kind of look at this area and does it meet the criteria of the statute? And does it stand in terms of the cash flow A or B? So we did not look at the, that question of impact on balance of the city. I know that the city finance department had some conversations about that. I know there was a, some concern about, from the county, about funding potentially need for an additional EMS unit. So we went back and we added that, at least the capital part of that, back into the project so that the general taxpayer wouldn't have to bear the cost of that and building and equipping that facility, which we assumed would be in the district. So, but in addition to just a general ongoing analysis of broader impacts, we didn't do that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I can ask more questions if you need to.
Thank you. Staff?
Good evening. I'm Mayor Bladen, councilmembers. I'm Melanie Giggly. I'm the Director of Planning and Development Services. As part of my position, I also work with the Pocatello Development Authority. Excuse me. As has been thoroughly described, made you read a nice long one, this public hearing is to allow comment on the proposed urban renewal area plan for the Northgate Urban Renewal Project. You've heard a description of the process required by Idaho Code and followed by the Pocatello Development Authority in bringing the project to this point. After a great deal of work and consideration, the PDA adopted the plan and recommended its approval and adoption by the council. The PDA and the city have utilized this economic development tool of urban renewal areas several times, generally very successfully. Although ideas about potential urban renewal areas have been considered over the past few years, this is the first time a new plan has been developed recently. As the council is aware, there are four existing areas. We have the North Yellowstone, North Portneff, Naval Ordinance, and Airport. The North Yellowstone District, it has been very successful, will be closed this year 10 years early. The area originally approved by the council in 2004 includes behind the area where Costco is, Lowe's, the Pocatello Town Square area. It funded about $9.3 million in infrastructure improvements, like roads, curb, gutter, other utilities. Private development, extremely conservatively based on a few building permit for major buildings out there, was estimated at about $40 million immediately on. Ultimately, more than $60 million in valuation will be returned to the tax rolls from the work that has been done there. That district incurred bonded debt. These bonds have now been paid, and the process is well underway. We should see that closed by June, July at the latest. Should the Northgate District be formed, the first reimbursements, because I know it's fairly small to read some of this, would be to the public entities that provided funding for the construction of the new interchange, specifically the city of Pocatello, for $450,000. Bannock County, $1.3 million, and Pocatello Development Authority at $2 million. That is the money paid to ITD that will be spent, well, is currently being spent as the Northgate interchange is being constructed. Other items, and both Phil and Megan touched on them briefly, are major infrastructure items, streets, water, sewer, kind of the main backbone of the entire development, the larger pieces of public infrastructure, including the potential fire EMS facility. All projects are anticipated to be a reimbursement basis, no bonded debt. This makes the plan in general very low risk for the city and the PDA, with money being paid out only after projects are completed and only a sufficient increment is generated. So if the money is not there, it simply is not reimbursed to whatever entity is in line. Development within the area would be subject to the city's usual development codes and regulations. The P&amp;Z Planning and Zoning Commission did review the plan and determined it to be in compliance with the city's comprehensive plan. Honestly, I think you've got a lot of detail in front of you. I'm not sure if it's worth me trying to add now or just be willing to ask, answer questions. And I know Megan and Phil would also be willing to answer questions.
Rick?
Melanie, can you address the separate intergovernmental agreement for roles and responsibilities with Chubbick and Bannock County?
Certainly. The way, because the property is within multiple jurisdictions, what those agreements do is transfer the powers of administering this plan and the funds to the PDA. Because the land right now, 300 acres is all that's in the city of Pocatello. The remainder is still in Bannock County. So they had to, in essence, agree to allow this to occur in a jurisdiction that they are not, you know, give the control to the PDA rather than keeping it. Chubbick was also involved because with the annexation across the interchange, the interchange itself, a piece of it, is actually then technically within the city limits of Chubbick. So part of our TIF district is in that entity also. So we needed to have their agreement to allow the TIF money to work through.
Linda?
Could you say a little bit more about the risk difference between how North Yellowstone was set up and how this will be set up, that why it's less risky?
Sure. When, on North Yellowstone, and I will grant you that I was not the one standing up here in 2004 when that was first adopted, but we had one major employer, one major business, I think, at the very forefront planning to be in there, but you, so your increment would be really small at first, they obviously are, and it needed a lot of infrastructure to get there. So what the PDA did was bonded for the debt. We issued bonds to the tune of over $13 million, and then we had the money, we, meaning PDA, had the money to go ahead and fund the construction of the road, Hurley's one of the big ones, the roundabout, all of the sidewalks, the sewer and water lines in there, their traffic signal has some money in it, that kind of infrastructure. Then the PDA, then the money that rolls in not only has to pay the bonds, but it has to pay the interest. So you actually have that extra added cost, not just the cost of the construction, and if the increment is not there, you have to figure out how to pay those bonds. In this instance, if there is an increment generated, then there is money to spend. If there is not an increment generated, there is not money to spend. So really, the risk is largely at the developer level. They will be putting in the infrastructure with the understanding that if the incentive, if the increment is there through these owner participation agreements that Megan described, they have the potential to be reimbursed for those costs. If the increment is not there, they are not. So the risk is, actually, it's not that there's no risk, it's that it shifted. It's not the cities and the PDAs.
Could you also, on the reimbursement, there's an order, isn't there, on who gets reimbursed in what order?
Not all of that has been worked out. That would be part of the PDA working with the owners. The intent, I believe, right up front is to reimburse first the public entities that put money into the interchange. So that order has, the first three are taken. So developers will not receive any money until after the public entities have received theirs.
Okay.
Roger, you've alluded to the North Yellowstone TIF district. Did it have any anchor retail coming into it?
I know that Lowe's, as I recall, and I was trying to dig out some of the details, but Lowe's was the main anchor that was in-
In the strip mall and the other?
-ahead of time. Some of those were in the works, but not, I do not believe they were firmed up at the time.
And when it was amended, was Costco ready to move in?
I believe that at the point of amendment was about the time Costco was-
So Costco had pretty much been recruited, and we had to form the TIF district to finish the deal?
No. The TIF district was before Costco.
Well, I know-
The bonds were already issued.
But, but I mean, Costco was added to the amended district, which helped it pay off very fast.
Oh, yeah, certainly. Every business that has gone in there, every improvement has increased.
But I'm just saying that the district was expanded to that area.
No, the district was written to include that area to begin with.
I don't believe so, because it had the, it had the Forest Service building that the city had to purchase, and I believe that we had to annex, I mean, not annex, but include, expand the district based on the formula.
You know, I would have to defer to you for the moment, but my understanding, looking at the documents, is that the only change in 2007 was to lengthen the term, to make sure we had time to pay that debt.
Any other questions?
Well, for Melanie, I gotta ask a lot of questions, because it's only Thursday, and I have other responsibilities in a few minutes, so I'll have to leave, so I just have to get some of this stuff out of the way. When I looked at the plan, and I'm probably going to take a little time to set context, I noticed there was a great emphasis on the comprehensive plan that was put in place in 2015. I noticed that that plan moved the, to the first chapter, property rights. It was back far, much farther, kind of almost buried in the comprehensive plan, our value, our vision, before that. I also noticed that in this section, there is not a mention of that first chapter in what we have before us. The plan does not mention Chapter 1 at all. It goes, it starts with Chapter 2. And when I read that, I, it says, "Property Rights: An Analysis of Provisions Which May Be Necessary to Ensure That Land Policies, Restrictions, Conditions, and Fees Do Not Violate Private Property Rights Adversely Impact Property Values or Create Necessary Technical Limitations on the Use of Property and Analysis As Prescribed Under the Declarations in Chapter 80 Title 67 Idaho Code." And then it develops that further in the chapter with a goal. When I read this, and I'm coming out of some of my experience, because I've approached at least three times the PDA to do a study that looks at how this may impact other properties, particularly at the impact of what it might do to taxes, and also, I think, with fees, because when we charge fees for sanitation or water or for sewer, this is going to have an impact in dividing that out. But the taxes, you know, as I look at this, I didn't realize some of this until I was able to ask questions. But the first year out, this will generate about $178,000, and then that will probably increase by about 50% by the end of it. So at the end of it, we will be generating somewhere around $250,000, $260,000 is all that will be coming to the city in terms of tax base and taxes derived off base. We don't know, I don't know, and this is where my skepticism comes in, because we are one of the highest taxed cities in, we're the top, well, we are the top tax city, that's provided in our budget analysis here compared to the other top cities in Idaho. We are forced, we are forced to address our cap in terms of how much we can expend because we are reaching our limit. This will not add any value other than the $15 million to our limit, and eventually it'll get to 23. So my big question- we are reaching our limit. This will not add any value other than the 15 million to our limit, and eventually it'll get to 23. So my big question is, how will we know assuredly? Because there's allusion to how speculative this could be, and that's why we look at protecting people. It's mentioned in here that this is not a good candidate for bonding, and I think we got a pretty good bond rate on the Pocatello, or the North Yellowstone, it's called Pocatello Square or something, we often refer to it. We got good bonding rate because of Pocatello, but this is, this is not in that category according to the report I read. So how do we know, and this is where I have to be a fiduciary, how do we know that we're not going to have a negative impact over the life of this because we have not studied?
That's a very good question. In the development of the TIF district, though, from the PDAs, what they do in creating this for you as a council to look at, is they look at the TIF itself more so than the city as a whole. Now, there is the market analysis that talks about absorption of some of the land uses, some of that kind of stuff, but if that kind of study, if it's desired by the council, is certainly something that could be done.
Well, we, I approached directly twice, had the mayor approach once, and we were turned aside. But it looks to me like the Pocatello Development Authority works on behalf of Pocatello in conjunction with working with developers. It's a balance, and I don't feel like I have experienced that balance in terms of knowing what to expect. I'm really for this, but I cannot move very fast on this until I know there's been a very thorough analysis. Because when I look at the value here of $23 million, $24 at the end, that's about what one year's worth of new construction is in Pocatello on average. And I just don't see where our tax structure is, where our other things are. I think our taxpayers, when they're paying so much, want relief on their taxes. They want our TIF districts to not pay for this TIF district. They want to get rewarded by helping invest, having helped invest and set aside taxes. So to me, it really behooves the PDA to hire the person that can do an analysis very similar to what was done in the district on the rest of Pocatello, and say, okay, will this influence 50% of what we're putting in here, will it influence 150% of what we're putting here in the rest of Pocatello? Until I know that, it's hard to move. And particularly, do you know of any destination type of store or destination type of business that's coming into this district?
I have no information on specific businesses that are, that have committed to coming in.
Okay, so where we were talking to other places of the North Yellowstone, and we had those in part of the discussion at a minimum, we don't have any discussion directly with anyone that will be building in this area, so that we can kind of frame what our expectations are.
I certainly do not, no.
Okay. That's probably all I should ask from you.
Are you sure, because?
I know, I've got short time, I'm a short timer.
If there's another question, I would run it real quick.
Okay. Well, some of my other questions would have to do with when I read the comprehensive plan. I mean, people, you've got to realize the volumes of stuff we've had to process. If, if you look at our budget, you know, that's several hundred pages. This plan is about 400 pages. If you look at the comprehensive plan, that's 300 to 400 pages. We've had a couple iterations of this plan because it shifted. I think the first time it was a 2 million square foot mall was in the first thing I saw, and it's down to a 1 million square foot mall now. Probably the Amazon effect, you know? And, and so it's really hard for me to understand how we've also taken into account the fact that part of the comprehensive plan really looks at our per capita income, and it looks at how we have fallen behind neighbor cities, other cities in Idaho, even the state in terms of our growth rewards for that per capita, that we haven't experienced what they've experienced. And so I guess one of the things I really want to know is, are there any metrics in this plan that try to protect us like we've had in other plans? In terms of the number of jobs that need to be guaranteed for reimbursement? That's been part of two or three plans at least, kind of benchmarks.
Yeah. Some of those were in other plans, but they were through a variation of the owner participation plan. Remember, this isn't a contract with the owners. This is the framework of the plan of what will happen. Now, the PDA, in negotiation with the owners, may say, I don't want to, gee, I shouldn't, I hate to put any kind of words out there because I think it's completely speculative, but sometimes with the PDA's work, they will say, yes, you can have this amount of money, but you have to guarantee this many jobs at this wage, or this grant or reimbursement turns into a loan. That's part of the later negotiation.
Okay, so there is potential for this to-
There is certainly some potential. I, you know, I don't want to put words in the board's mouth-
Okay.
...or sway either side of the negotiation, but that is a later piece of what could happen.
I'm trying to think of all the things I need to ask in a hurry. So that can be negotiated, but we, and this, we're bringing in 1,700 acres tonight as part of this, or is it going to be increments?
Annexation is intended to occur, the developers will bring it in, when they're ready to start developing their next phases.
So this will be like nine phases?
Nine, 11, yeah. Right now, we have 300 acres approximately has been annexed in the city of Pocatello. The next annexation, conceivably, maybe it's 100. Maybe after that, because of what they have in the works, there will be 200, maybe the next one will be 3. Those are not hard and fast. It's just the overall is about 1,800 acres.
And I'm going to finish with this. We, we see, and I don't remember what the number was, I'm going to say somewhere around $50 million for infrastructure that's coming in here. I mean, you probably can't deal with this question, but you may. On the March 14 meeting, our study session, work session, we were presented by the Water Department and the Wastewater Treatment Department, Sewer Department, plans that had about $200 million of growth that we needed to be able to address. And, or is that being incorporated into this plan at all?
I, I think, and there's probably folks over there that may be able to answer better, answer questions better on, are you talking about the rate study?
No, this is beyond rate study. This is the sewer line and redesign of some areas so we can get gravity flow, pump them water up into that area, because we, the exploration has found there's no easy access to groundwater, so we got to pump all the water up through a system and lift it and all that stuff. And one, one study was about 80 million, and the other study was about 120 million for all this infrastructure, and the main part of it was weighted to being able to embrace this new growth there.
You know, quite honestly, you're right. That's not a question I can give you a good answer to. There may be folks on staff here that may be able to expand on that far better than I can.
Well, I might, wait here, just real quick. That, that study session and the 200 million was not focused specifically in this TIF district area, this area. That was throughout the city over the next 25 years of anticipated growth throughout the entire city, not, not for this one area.
Well, but everything I saw in the design and the maps had the Highland area and this area addressed. It didn't have other parts of the city.
Okay, we'd have to-
But I, I just, you know, I think it was specifically, and I believe it really addressed this area, we need to do some infrastructure improvement in the Highland area, we know that. I think it's been mentioned a couple times that we have about capacity right now in that area for 750 new residential areas before we have to address this capacity. So I just, how are we negotiating this in terms of developers, and who's going to pay what, and how will this affect rates? No study's been done on that, has it?
Yeah, this is, it's a little bit out of my bailiwick, and I would really misstep terribly to try to answer that, but I, the way I understand it is, this development, like any other development, in general, will pay for their own development going into the ground. It's simply that the TIF reimbursed some of the major backbone infrastructure, the sewer pipes, the water pipes, some of the other franchise utilities, maybe even involved. But I really can't answer to that study. I was not privy to it. My apologies, I was not privy to that one.
That's okay, that was a, I believe, a different topic. This was wrapped into the middle of it as well, but there was some other, other things and so.
Okay. Anything else?
Okay. Anything else, council? I think we're good, thank you.
I won't respond.
Can anyone else respond to some of the questions, like could Buck come up and answer some questions?
If you ask, if him to, you, you-
Buck, would you be willing to come up and answer some questions?
What, just a minute. Melanie, has there been any correspondence?
Yes, we have three emails. I believe you were all provided those copies at the Jennifer clarification meeting.
Okay, thank you. And we had any others?
Nope. We distributed everything.
Let's, let's reserve those questions for at the end, so that we can follow this process the way people are accustomed to, and then we'll address. So if you have a question for that, that we can clarify, then Buck can do that. Okay, thank you.
Buck?
Thank you. Then we would look for any testimony in support of the application. Any, any-
I just want to, Buck, because this is-
Well, I'm, I'm just going to say, I'm going to go through these folks, and so-
This is-
No, this is where you want to stand up if you are in favor of this application going forward.
This is your only freebie unless you're asked.
You only going to give me three minutes?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so before you start, though, please, if you're in, yeah, please sign in.
There's a signing sheet right there on the thing. If you're here to testify in support of this, please form a line. We'll make it as efficient as we can. If you're after the support, then we will be looking for uncommitted. We'll ask the same thing to form a line, and then we'll ask for a pause, and we'll ask the same thing to form a line, to try to keep this project moving or this hearing moving quickly.
Okay, are we ready to begin? Okay, for the record, Buck Swainey speaking right now. I would, I would like to begin by noting that the attendance tonight is very disappointing. Incredibly few people showing up. Is this your normal situation?
Oh, this is just a fraction.
It's just a fraction of the normal, right? I gotta attribute it to the lack of press coverage, which is kind of the beauty. Thank you for the, for the opportunity to catch up with everybody tonight and to talk through a couple of these points. There's a lot of information, detailed information, and this is incredibly complex stuff, and so what I want to do is just home in on a few of what I think are the most important points. The first goes really toward addressing Commissioner Bray's question, you know, what's this going to do to taxes? And a couple of things that I can point out for the community is that over the last 10 years or so, all of the districts you've closed have brought, if I recall correctly, $169 million onto the tax rolls. Can you imagine what your city and your tax situation would be like without that $169 million on your tax rolls right now? Much different to operate, much different to function. For us, and these are some numbers, you'll see in the middle column, whoa, no, you won't see that? There you go. In the middle column near the bottom, you see a number, $500 million and change. That's the built value using these incredibly conservative estimates, and if we were to just do a basic math concept, this $50 million that we're spending on the backbone infrastructure, it paves the way for us to be able to put as much as 5,000 residential units and a commercial center in place. If, if we just do straight linear math and say that those homes are each worth $250,000 apiece on average, we're talking about $1.25 billion that would come onto the tax roll as a result of this investment. That's the first thing. And so what, what will this do for taxes? That's easy enough to assess over time, and this is a long-term question. This is not just a short-term question. However, if it were a short-term question, the other thing you'll see over here is that it takes us until the year 2028 before we're done paying the taxes back to the public entities. So 100% of the tax increment revenue is paid back to the public for the first 10 years this thing is active. The developers don't see any of that. So we have funded exclusively public infrastructure for that first 10 years without getting any payback on it, okay? And so for the first 10 years, all of the increment is coming to the city, county, and PDA. And then for the next stretch of a few years, we have this nice little window where we can take care of some really important bottlenecks with infrastructure like sewer, et cetera. And so for those intermediate years, let's say years 10 through 15, or 11 through 15, that's when we start to catch up with the investment we've already made and start to create some resources for us to be able to address the bottlenecks downstream. I have so many things to talk about here. I have 11 seconds left. Maybe, perhaps I'll have a chance to come up again at the end and wrap some things, unless you want to offer me an extension to talk for a couple more minutes.
I would say, I would let him speak for three minutes more so that I can hear more before I have to leave.
Okay, with, we're going to do, nobody else is getting another three minutes. I'm just going to throw that out there right now. Don't ask.
Okay, thank you. All right, and so a couple more things. The Pocatello's TIF-driven private investment over the last 20 years or so has been over half billion dollars. The TIF as an incentive has driven, according to public records that are available, $540 million of private investment over the last couple of decades. The Central Corridor, which has been discussed here, brought $84 million on the tax rolls and dropped the tax levy by 3%. And so when these come onto the tax rolls, they have a major community-wide beneficial effect. Those are things that ought not to be forgotten. A couple of more things, again, I would emphasize that this is a developer-at-risk proposition. We will always be footing the bill and putting the money out, and it will belong to the whole public, the use of the infrastructure that's created, and then we will be hoping to get paid back through increment at some point in time. We are extending the risk ourselves because we know that this is the way that we can make development efficient, effective, and safe in Pocatello, and it's the way that we can stay out of Pocatello's pockets. It's the way that we can avoid looking for or asking for anything. This is increment we create, and it's pointed at specific infrastructure investments that need to be made so that Pocatello can continue to grow and build its tax base. So this is a win-win. A couple of more things, in the, in the tax report, which everybody hasn't fully seen here, it earmarks between $4 and $5 million for an EMS facility in the future. So we recognize that there's going to be a need for a fire station or an ambulance station or whatever, and from the increment, for, I can't remember if it's $4 or $5 million, it's somewhere in that zone, has been earmarked to build that, so no capital expense to the city to come up to speed on that. A couple of more things. One is that the estimate of $200 million to build out the sewer and water systems, that would be double counting because this number you see here, the $50 million, includes the whole entire cost of those systems that are relevant in the northeast quadrant. So we're paying that increment of $50 million out of that $200 million, there is no other expense involved. It all is built into the numbers that you see here. We've costed the cost of sewer, water, and everything, the major backbones of everything, the transmission off of our site and down to the treatment center, it's all been costed in here, so there is no increment of expense above that that will be required. It's been built into these estimates here. Finally, a couple of things we've done. You don't have development fees, which impact fees that help to satisfy or take care of these things. Recognizing that and recognizing you probably don't have time to create them so they'll be helpful or useful, we have built our own self-imposed development fee where we collect money that goes into being able to fund near-term development of water and sewer resources so that it can be done legally, but also so that we can stay ahead.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I ask you a question.
Sure.
Buck?
Yes?
Obviously, you've spent millions of dollars already. You must think someone's coming. I know you can't tell us specific, but you can tell us someone's coming, right?
I will, I, as has been my policy, I will not talk about it, and if, if we just take a quick historic look back, it was over three years ago that I started this public-private partnership. I worked my tail off for it, and we- I worked my tail off for it, and we gone as fast and hard as we can. There was one point in time where we were working very hard on our recruitment. That was in the first year. And after we had about 17 major roadblocks dealing with the public and the codes and everything else, we decided we needed to get our job done and get our ducks in a row and be able to guarantee a time that the road and the interchange would be open before we picked up and continued with some of that. We're back into it now, but this is a process that takes time. It will take shit over time. And I think a really good and important analog for everybody to understand is that you've, everybody's heard about the Silicon Slopes. This is kinda Utah's brand for all of the job development growth that's been created there. That started over 20 years ago when Micron first placed their facility in Lehigh. And it took almost 17 years for that to start to bloom and blossom after the infrastructure and the start had been created. This stuff does not happen overnight. It takes time. You have to lay the platform. You have to have the foundation. That's what we're doing.
Thank you. Thank you, Roger. Thank you. Any others in support of the application?
My address on here too?
Just Pocatello.
David Ross, 2459 Hisky Street, Pocatello, Idaho. I totally support this program, this development. It's gonna bring great things to Pocatello we've needed for a long time. We have a lot of low-income jobs. I think this will bring in the jobs. Look at Napa with the Amazon situation there. If they had this in place like it is right now with us, we would probably have something like an Amazon. I think the city needs to take a risk. All TIFs work. We know that they work. We've proven it in the past. Move forward. We don't wanna stay in the back. There's been a lot of misinformation out there in the newspaper and other social media about how this is gonna raise our service fees. It's very minimal. We need to take a chance, just like if the school districts are gonna raise a little bit of tax to help out the, to build new schools, this will be just a small major, a small minor part of the tax base that will be going up. We have some other situations, a lot about the downtown area needing help. I think that there's some improvement can be done there, other ways that will cost us some money, and we should look at that to help them out also. But I think we really need this development in Pocatello to move forward. We're falling behind all the other cities around us. Look at Twin Falls, what they've done with the TIFs and Boise, and I think we need to move forward, not go backwards.
Thank you. Thank you. Any others in support?
John, just talking to this?
Yeah, just go ahead. If you stand up, it'll pick you up.
All right. All right. Hey, y'all. Happy Monday Thursday. My name's Amy Jean Kenna, and I live on 431 South 9th, apartment number two. I support this development, but I recognize what he was saying about not wanting it to affect taxation on residents and all of that. But we've been working on a kinda, what I would call 99% kinda political revolution involving a convention of the states to amend the United States Constitution, and we're planning for the location to be Pocatello in July, August of 2020. Virtually all, this happened online months ago. Virtually all United States congressmen approve of this. Walmart has already declared in support of this convention of the states. Kroger has also declared in support of the convention of the states. The convention of the states will be a gathering of 50 state legislators to amend the constitution to reduce the presidential running age to 30.
Amy, I can appreciate that, but the topic at hand is the north.
Okay. That would be the location.
North Gate, okay.
That would be the location, 'cause we're gonna have, if this goes through, and I'm not sure that it will, we do have support online, but that doesn't mean it's gonna be a reality. But if support continues to grow and 50 state legislators wanna come to Pocatello to reduce the presidential running age to 30, which has never been done before in the United States of America. The constitution has only been amended through Congress voting. If the states wanna come, you'd be looking at 6,000 people at least.
Okay.
So I'd say go ahead and do it by faith.
Super. Okay.
She didn't sign in.
Thank you. Amy, if you just remember to write your name down there on that signing sheet. Thank you, Amy. Any others in support of the application?
Ken Poppy, 1754 Cottage. This development up there, we were spending a lot of time, it's for the people. It's the walkable trails and all that. What we're doing is really unique. We're trying to bring jobs to our town, but we're using our own local businesses as well to make them prosper and bring them up. We're bringing in homes up there that are above and beyond high-tech. Our group's been all over the U.S., looking at different products, products that other cities don't even have yet, products that are so high-tech, bringing it first in the southeast Idaho, even a west. You know, we're trying to build a community that's for everybody, not just for the developers. I mean, walking tunnels, pathways we're building right now, connect through the city centers, all the way up to the mountain. The roads are all way overbuilt. They last longer, you know, 30 years. We're looking at the roads, working with the cities, they know what we're putting in there. It's not just a regular development. It's not just, it's for our community. We're looking to build something for all of us, not just for us. So these, just like these houses we're putting in, the smart homes, you know, we're building in, I've worked with Toll Brothers, I've talked to them, and we're building better houses than Toll Brothers. Toll Brothers is one of the biggest high-end homes in the U.S. We were with them two months ago, and the technology homes are above and beyond theirs. So we're bringing something here that everybody wanted for years, and now we're trying to make it succeed, and we will. Everything that we've done up there, there's not, we didn't borrow nothing, and there's no investors. It's the two developers. So this place will never go broke. I didn't borrow no money. So if people think it's a whole coup, I don't think it, 'cause it's not. This is real.
Super. Thank you. Any others in support of the application?
Hi, my name is Jay Christensen. I live at 15170 West Lacy Road in Pocatello. I'd like to speak in favor of this proposal. I have watched a lot of water going to the bridge over 43 years of experience in this area, and one observation is that Pocatello was very, very good at one thing in particular. We raised great kids, we sent them to college, they became very talented, and then we export those kids around the country because we don't have the jobs here that will retain them. And so one of the things that I feel that this TIF district will be is the start of the ability to create the jobs that will bring back the opportunity for our kids to be able to graduate from college and come back to where they want to live and live and be here in the same city with their families. I think that's one of the benefits of this, and so I would just speak in favor of it. If you think about this, it's like a dream come true. Who could not jump at the chance to have somebody come in from out of the area and put in the infrastructure that the city doesn't have so that it can grow on somebody else's risk? To me, it's such a no-brainer. Yes, there's some elements to deal with, but if you look at the big picture, this is a wonderful opportunity for Pocatello to look forward into the future, to see the lifestyle that can be created through the vision that Millennial has and the Northgate Project has. It can be transforming for the city, so I would speak in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others in support of the application? I'm sorry, before you get going, Jay, did you write your stuff down on the, did you sign in?
Yes. Listening here, it reminds me of my little five-year-old boy.
If you, if you'd state your name for the people watching.
Pardon?
If you'd please state your name for.
Elton Zundle.
Thank you, Elton.
We were planning a trip on a boat, and at home he did something that he didn't wanna tell his mom. And so we went to the grocery store, and I says, "Michael, looks like Tiffany's gonna go on the boat. Looks like your mom's gonna go on the boat. I'm gonna go on the boat." And big alligator tears formed in his eyes. "What about me?" I see with Northgate, I hear people saying, "What about me? How is this economic strike going to benefit me as a person living in Banning County?" This is one of the most aggressive, most beneficial strides towards economic sovereignty for Pocatello that I've seen in 50 years, and I can remember that 50 years. This is something that the people are asking, "How will it benefit me?" I remember a story of a guy going through the desert, come upon a pump, and there was a quart of water and a note with it. It says, "The pump was put in six months ago, and the gaskets and vows are brand new. But if you want some water, you gotta prime the pump. You gotta prime the pump and have faith and believe. You got to give of yourself if you're willing to receive. Leave a quart for others. Think it kindly, desert people." People don't drink the desert sand when they're in desert 'cause they're thirsty. They drink it 'cause they can't tell the difference. We need people to know the difference between a want and something that's gonna move them forward. And we do that by letting them know how it benefits them.
Thank you. Any others in support of the application?
Good evening. I'll make it short. Don Zevi, Pocatello. I've been involved in this project for quite some time, and you know, and I wish Roger was here, sir, 'cause I wanted to address one of his questions about what's it gonna do for a commercial development and what's it gonna do overall. What I can tell you is this. In Pocatello, we lack the land and the proximity of land and for the development of commercial property, for commercial buildings. We don't have Class A office space in town, do we, Jim?
We do not.
Okay? We don't have any of those things. And many of the companies, and I've talked with you about it, Mayor, in your office, many of the companies that we all are in touch with want Class A office space. It's not available. And to do that, to make it available, we have to have the land and the infrastructure to be able to make that happen. And Northgate delivers that opportunity for it to happen. And when those businesses, now, we, as we work to recruit them here to the community, those businesses will beget more businesses, and those businesses will beget retail. One of the reasons why our retail is down here, quite frankly, folks, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but we all shop out of town. We don't shop locally, and that's one of the things that really drives businesses away from Pocatello. If we would spend our money here, and I'm guilty as the next guy, 'cause I didn't buy this blazer here, but if we'd spend our money here, we'd be getting more businesses coming in. And so I'm in support of Northgate. I believe in it. I know it will happen, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to be involved, and I hope that City Council will support this 100%.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a dumb question?
Sure. I don't wanna get in the habit of asking questions while we're in this, but go ahead.
I know.
The heck?
It's 'cause I asked him a question. Yeah. There are people here who are really concerned about Old Town. As a commercial realtor, and there are several other really good ones here, would you comment in terms of what you think is going to happen to Old Town just because we might have Northgate? And I'm thinking of Opportunity Zone and other things.
I don't, I don't really think that it's gonna have a major impact on Old Town at all.
Okay.
And the reason for that is, is that Old Town has got its own mystique. People really like it there. People like to go down there and socialize, they like to eat dinner there, they like to do those kinds of things. And most people that we're gonna recruit in here, and I know this for a fact, I've worked with some of the FBI people that have come into town because they're trying to bring other companies into town. And some of those folks wanted to live downtown, and they, and they shop downtown. They do, they go to dinner downtown. And so that's not gonna draw from it. As we bring more people in, they're gonna go to it because they like the mystique, they like the feel. So I don't think it's an issue, Jim.
That's what I wanted you to say.
Sounds like it was set up.
It was.
Thank you.
That's all I'm talking.
Good evening. My name's Sam Nettinger. I live 2950 Birdie Thompson. I've been involved to some degree or another in this community for a good number of years. And having been at the head of the Chamber of Commerce in the late 90s and early 2000s, I can tell you how long it takes to do a project. We initiated legislation to be able to form an auditorium district. And it took us until three years ago to build the MAC, which is up on the hill. I don't know how many people have been in it. I would encourage you to go up there. Probably the finest multipurpose facility anywhere west of Boise. I mean, east of Boise. There's nothing west of Boise. I'm currently involved in a project that will enhance the Northgate project. We'll be breaking ground up there on Wednesday next week for the Gold Star Monument, which is a monument dedicated to the people who have lost loved ones in the military. That will be the first thing that comes out of the ground so that everybody will see it. And I would encourage that you support this project. During my term at the chamber, there was always a question, regardless of where I went, what's coming to Pocatello? And quite often, you had to say nothing. We don't know of anything that's going on, and that's because we have no infrastructure to do what really needs to be done. This will give us a leg up on virtually anybody on the east side of the state, for sure, to be able to move forward and have a project of this magnitude. It will be a shining star, you can bet on that. This community has shown a willingness and an ability to know how to do TIFs and take care of them, so I would just encourage you to support the project.
Good evening. My name is John Wilks. I am from, in Pocatello, 2081 Sunrise White. I, I'm a contractor. I employ over 125 people here in the local area. And speaking for the construction community, we need a project like this to continue to thrive so that we can employ people and provide jobs to them. When you have 125 people that count on you to, for their livelihood, so they can raise families, so that they can afford to put kids for college, we need something like this to continue to help us to support these families. I'm very much in favor of this project, so thank you.
Thank you. Any others in support of the application? Okay, any? You in support?
Speak.
Come on, get up and speak. Come on, get up and speak! Yeah, the newspaper right there for you, they're not gonna say anything. He'll record it. He'll have to print it out if he says it. We'll go ahead and go to uncommitted. Any uncommitted to the application?
Good evening. My name is Mike Thering, 1054 North Hayes. I just have a question. This seems to be, and maybe one of your presenters can, can answer, this seems to be using urban renewal mechanism, and it seems like it's neither urban nor it's renewal. You have existing farmland that's being turned into a subdivision. So I'm just curious as to how that works, and maybe someone can answer that. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Any others uncommitted to the application?
Hi. Sue Skinner, and I'm at 1614 South Fairway, Pocatello. First of all, thank you for this hearing because I always learn a lot. I find out that I don't know as much as I do sometimes, but there are just four items that I guess I have as concerns to share with the council this evening. One of them is certainly water. And basically, I think, three or four years ago, the Port of Resource Council came in front of the city council, and I think there's only two left from that original council. We were advocating putting water first and having water security language in the city's comprehensive plan. Well, I think that some of the experiences that, if I understand correctly, about the Northgate looking for water are such that maybe it's time to amend the comprehensive plan and put water security language again in the comprehensive plan. I think putting water first and valuing water could have maybe helped this whole process a little bit.
It's right after air.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, and then the issue that I'm concerned about is air. One thing that I...
I didn't... Good job, Sue.
Yeah, I understand. So, so one of the things that I am concerned about is air and air quality. One of the things that I've noticed with oftentimes when we have out-of-state developers come, that they don't recognize that we have unique soils here, that once the vegetation is removed, you have a dust bowl, and oftentimes it gets away from you. So I just want to encourage that the management of the soil moisture while this construction happens, is encouraged, I guess, with the developer, but also with that is making sure that it does get to a powder because it will impact your private property owners around it type of thing. It gets as fine as like flour, and if you drop water on it, the water just runs off. So you're gonna have some stormwater issues along with that. So just be aware that we have some local challenges when it comes to soils here. I'm concerned about sewage treatment capacity. I would like to see us balance taking care of the legacy issues like Johnny Creek with new growth, and just keep that in mind as well. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others uncommitted to the application?
Chris Stevens, 4801 Kim. I am neither foreigner against this, but what makes me uneasy as a tax and fee payer is how difficult it has been to get clear, up-to-date, succinct information around the market analysis, the financials, and particularly the impact on Pocatello as a whole community. I have spent hours combing through, reading large numbers of pages, and nobody has been able to, you know, say, "Okay, look, here is a 25-page summary of the situation." And for a taxpayer and for a citizen who wants to be involved, that makes being involved incredibly difficult, and it makes the whole process very non-transparent. The financial aspects especially concern me because, as PDA has said, this is a speculative project. I understand how TIFs work, but apart from Northgate, we, the city has ongoing operational costs such as ever-increasing personnel salaries and benefits, equipment replacement and maintenance, and we have this outstanding court settlement that may be as much as $20 million plus three grand a day interest if the newspaper is to be believed. And we have this request for about $47 million for water and sewer upgrades in the city that's coming due in 20, that is, is on the charts for 2020. So our property taxes have already been rising steadily for 10 years. We have, as was already mentioned, the highest levy rate for any comparable city in Idaho, and we don't have an unlimited resource there because we are approaching state caps. So I think getting all the arithmetic lined up and clear for the public is important. Who knows what the overall projected unreimbursed city costs for this project are gonna be? We don't know. We don't even have a ballpark. So I guess I would like to say, can we just slow down a minute here and make sure that we have everything clarified to the degree that it can be clarified in an ever-changing speculative venture? Because the TIF district will not necessarily pay for plowing the roads, for the road maintenance that is needed every three to five years regardless of whether it's overbuilt and new. Won't pay for the personnel in the new fire station when that comes on board. And I think the public needs more assurance that the people in charge have a plan. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I don't know how long you went after, but you're welcome.
I didn't.
You're super welcome because it was zeros when I looked at it. Any others uncommitted to the application? We did give Buck six minutes, though, so...
Good evening. Heather Distlekin, 635 Gary Street. I am opposed to the Northgate urban renewal area. I'm not opposed to economic development, but I am opposed to this process. This matter deserves scrutiny because if approved, public sector dollars will be rerouted from the general fund of the city into a special fund that does not require public consent. It is my opinion, TIFs are tools used for bypassing the consent of the taxpayers to create a special fund that a select few are allowed to choose how to spend and take gambles with. There's too little transparency and too little accountability in the PDAs. I don't believe a sufficient study has been completed on the impact of this new development. During the 10 to 20 years this TIF will be in place, the demand on the services the city provides will increase, services like the police, fire, sanitation, water, all previously mentioned. These services are the core responsibility and reason for the existence of this governmental entity. Also, the city hasn't completed an adequate water study on the new development area. On the delivery services, yes, but not on addressing what the actual water demands will be or where that water will come from. I've been requesting this report since November 9th of 2018, and I'm told every few months it's still in draft form. Today I was told there's no timeline or estimate as to when it'll be provided. In the city's decision to annex and zone this property, it stated the developer, the real property, being annexed into the city limits is to provide a water source sufficient to supply the water needs of the development of said property, or to provide a cash payment of an amount sufficient to purchase a water source. But the purchase of water rights can take several years. There's no guarantee of success in purchasing water rights. So until there's more information, it would be, in my opinion, irresponsible for this council to continue putting our community more at risk of a water crisis in the years to come. I'd like to read a portion of the executive summary of the PDA's determination, which I think demonstrates how far we've strayed from the original intent of TIFs. This is in part seven. "The portion of the Northgate urban renewal project area which is identified for residential uses is necessary and appropriate as there is a shortage of housing to sound standards and design which is decent, safe, and sanitary in the city. That the need for housing accommodations has been or will be increased as a result of the clearance of slums and other areas. That the conditions of blight in the area and the shortage of decent, safe, and sanitary housing cause or contribute to an increase in spread of disease and crime." I wasn't aware that there was blight in Northgate. I wasn't aware that people who'd be pushed out as a result of clearance of slums would be able to afford the proposed homes in the high $200,000 or $300,000 range. Please oppose the formation of this urban renewal district until at least a time the serious questions are answered. Thank you.
Good evening, council and Mayor Vlad. Thank you for allowing us to come and testify this evening. I actually was here a few months ago, and in my position, I think I have been enlightened a little bit this evening about some of the issues that are going on with this proposed development.
Can you give us your name?
I'm sorry, Sylvia Martinez. I wrote it down and didn't give it to you.
That's okay.
There, issues have, are being asked, which are very valid, and I think that when this was first proposed was 2017, and then 2018, it was kind of quickly pushed through city council and the development, Pocatello development. And there, on some of the questions, it did say that there were public hearings. I don't believe that that was advertised very much, but I did come to one last fall, and I have a lot of questions still about the way this is being pushed through so quickly. Mr. Bray was very eloquent in his questioning of the financial things that are going on and what that might do for taxpayers and the people of this community. I think people move here because they like the small, unique quality of life that's here. The out-of-doors, the, there's less traffic. I just drove through Saw Lake a few weeks ago, and I, as one, my neighbors, my friends, my family, do not want to see more traffic, more congestion, lines like there is in that area. I'm sorry, but we are a unique community. If we slow down and look at how we can develop this area in a unique fashion with environmentally-minded, I haven't heard any of that in how this development is gonna be developed. There, there's so much out there right now about solar and green development for water and everything, and that hasn't even been mentioned in this development. So council members, I'm getting down to the wire, I can't believe I've been able to talk this long, please stop and think about those things before you approve this development. We don't have to say yes in a month. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Okay, hearing none, then I will... Okay, we gotta move. You gotta move.
Victor Watts, 341 Allen. I would like to thank Roger Bray for coming into this quite a bit. I'd ask Jim Johnson to recuse himself from, he has a direct conflict with this project. He has 55 monopoly on selen cones up there. That's not right.
I'm sorry, you're incorrect.
Jobs are already low enough. We have a low employment. There's too many empty commercial buildings right now. There's the farmer's insurance billing. There's plenty of existing, for an existing tech hub. The city just vacated two large buildings close to ISU. The lowest cost of living in the values of the properties went up 20 percent in Pocatello, 6 percent predicted this next year. Homes have to come anyway because of the FBI building, so there's no, really no reason to have a TIF. If this TIF is approved, will the TIF also be granted for the area that already has an opportunity zone, meaning the north Old Town to Craft Road area? Does the area qualify? No, this is not a blighted area. Other funding, there's private options are available for funding. Existing properties are not there. This is bare land. Pocatello residents' areas will grow easily without this TIF. Have the Satterfields ever asked for a TIF? Do they need TIFs? I don't, I don't, I've never heard of it. The ground, this is a relocation, reallocation of stealing of taxes from the school district, 25 and other districts. Idaho, the Central Credit Union, and the medical centers can already afford these projects. Opportunity zone put taxes on the federal and state level, not a city level. Another option is the impact fees where the new homers and new businesses will pay for the sewer and water added loads. Also against, I'm also against gated communities. We don't need, if they want to live in a gated community, go to Phoenix. The main road should be responsibility of the city. That's about the only thing I agree with, the one from the connector to Olympus. Why is the city trying to transfer the responsibilities of spending taxpayer dollars to another agency that is not elected by the people? A TIF for the naval organs, that was probably a good thing. The opportunity zone in downtown Pocatello to the Northgate area, if you put a TIF in there on top of that, investors would see a 10-year, they'd have to invest 10 years, and after 10 years, they get 100 percent return on any improvements over that time period. And so if you added the TIF district on top of that, just think that, what would that do to that whole area? I'd like, thank you for giving time to speak.
Thank you.
Mike Seibert, 1665 Pocatello Crack Road, and I just want to tell you my journey from initially supporting this thing to opposing it. And when it started off, and the first was kind of announced, put out in the papers, well, it sounded great. New development coming, whole bunch of high-tech jobs, higher than average salaries, gonna provide walk-around neighborhoods and all that, and I thought that was great. Then time goes on, we go to a few meetings, we are asked, "Well, who do you got or contract to come?" And we get the same answer. "Well, we can't disclose anything. We're under confidentiality agreements." Well, to me, that's if we had somebody. Well, recently I went to some meetings, and some of the developers says, "We never had anybody." So I'm going from thinking it's a good deal to thinking it's just a TIF area for the developer to recoup his development cost. And this area is way too big for a typical TIF. It's like building a city adjacent to your existing city. When you do that, we have, John, we're just trying to keep growth compact to keep our costs down from over-expanding and driving the costs up to our utility payers. This thing is way too high. And you have to figure out, it's kind of like capture rates. When you're looking at that thing, like in your executive summary on page two, item seven, about developments, there's exist, there's so many developments under construction now through this valley. There's hundreds of living units being built, lots being platted, but more than will take care of, anything's coming up that's in our projected growth. The growth rate of our county's been like half a percent a year over the last 10 years. Last year peaked up to about 0.8 percent. That's just for the FBI. The economic study, far as I can tell, how they planned it out there, was running about 200 percent the past 10-year average on the growth rate. Okay? And what happened then, it was, and all of a sudden, Trump came in, and they did their little annexation, it screwed the whole thing up. And our, our infrastructure cost in this thing of the... And our infrastructure costs in this thing, that $200 million are true costs to this project. A lot of it is outside the project area, but it's cost that has to be done. Just under $50 million has to be billed by, into 2020 to support this. And what you do, we need an impact study.
Thank you. Nope, nope, thank you. He's begging, but I'm not gonna let him do it. Thank you very much. Any others opposed to it? Thank you, Mike. Thank you very much. Any others, any others opposed to the application? I knew that was gonna come back to get me because I, we let him do that, and then Chris went, I think, a few seconds long, but that's all right. Okay, then I would ask for a rebuttal, have an opportunity for a rebuttal by the applicant, There's a few questions that were asked.
Megan, will you need your laptop back on there, or?
Uh, no, I don't need something.
Thank you, thank you, Megan. There were a few questions, I don't know if you'd like to just say a few words or anything before I jump into the questions that were brought up here.
Uh, no, thank you, Mayor and Council, I'm happy to stand for questions.
Okay, let's just jump right into, there were four people that were opposed, three of them brought up a blighted area and urban renewal, and how does this, can you explain urban renewal for them? The question, I think, was how does this fit urban renewal because it's for blighted areas only, if I understood the question right?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and Council. So, in looking at an urban renewal project area, you have to look at both Chapter 20, Title 50, which is the Urban Renewal Law of 1965, as well as the Local Economic Act found in Chapter 29, Title 50. And both of those have to be read together, and the urban renewal laws apply to both instances of true economic development, but also downtown-type revital, urban revitalization projects. And in looking at the eligibility of an area, there are definitions of deteriorated and deteriorated conditions, and as part of that, there is a provision in there that discusses the eligibility of open land areas. And so, the eligibility factors were fully addressed in the eligibility study that came before the bodies in January 2018.
Okay, so, what they, what the three people that asked, really truly, they, they were led to, it sounds like Chapter 20, but they were not led to 29, Title 50.
That's correct.
And you have to have both of them together, and so there may have been some confusion on, on that end, there are some partial truths there. Another question that was brought up was the farmland, and I'm assuming that falls under the same thing, could you explain that very quickly?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. In the definitions of deteriorated and deteriorating areas found both in Chapters 20 and 29, there are specific provisions about agricultural operations being included within a revenue allocation area. And one of those requirements is that you need to seek the consent of the property owner for those parcels to be included within a revenue allocation area. So, as part of finding the eligibility factors which apply to open land areas, you'll also need to seek the consent from the property owners, and those consents were obtained in this instance.
Okay. Did anybody else come up with any other questions other than those? Those were direct questions that I had, that I had heard. Okay, any other questions for Megan?
I guess for the sake of the opposition, perhaps something you can comment on, on the environmental aspect of the new development, onto the region, perhaps?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Councilwoman. That's a great question, and I think one that really does need to be addressed in this instance, particularly because when you talk about the creation of a revenue allocation area, the underlying development that occurs in that area has to go through the city permitting process. So, the agency is not charged with that role or capacity in making those types of policy determinations for the city. So, all the development that occurs within the area is pushed through the city permitting process, design review and all of that.
Okay, and then one other question, and I might need Melanie for this one, but you may be able to cover this as well. There was a concern of the PDA, the Pocatello Development Authority, having a lack of transparency in their financials and things like that. Does the Development Authority have the same responsibility of notifying the, putting a public notice out, having a public hearing on their financials and all of that stuff to make sure that there's a transparency, there's not a concern of transparency? Do they go, I guess, do they disclose to the public what those numbers?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Urban renewal agencies, including the Pocatello Development Authority, are, it is a public entity, and it is subject to open meeting laws, and in addition, there is an annual budget that is adopted by the PDA Board, and there's also several other reporting requirements, including the local government body registry with the Legislative Services Office, there's information that has to be uploaded on that site, there's also reporting requirements to the State Tax Commission. And as part of this plan adoption process, this is the time set for the public hearing on the Northgate project area, but all of those meetings that occurred were open public meetings that were probably noticed, before all of the public entities involved, including the county and Chubb.
Okay, thank you. I think I get most of the questions that I had written down, so, thank you.
Just one comment, it's not necessarily a question, but maybe you want to comment on it, but one of the opposition, or comments in the opposition testimony was asking us to slow down on approving this development, but what we're considering here tonight is, I mean, the development is already approved. What we're considering is the TIF district, or the setting up of a TIF district, is that not correct?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question as well, thank you, Mayor and Councilwoman. The, the public hearing is, the topic of the public hearing is the establishment of a proposed revenue allocation area and urban renewal plan, and the development is a component part of that, but the development, again, is not necessarily governed by the PDA, that development has to go through the proper planning channels through the city. So, they are a little different.
And I guess, when I said it was approved, well, parts of it, yeah, so that will happen, that will be an ongoing process, right? As far as the development, but this is a financial mechanism.
That's correct.
Okay, then maybe one last question, because sometimes when you're right in the middle of it, you don't realize, and what is the timeframe to put, get to this point in a, for an urban renewal district? What is there, what, what needs to happen before you get here? You walked through your slides a minute ago, that in 2017, we started this process and stuff, what, there was a concern that we've pushed this through very quickly, and I don't know, what are the timeframes? What, what's the process? I know you walked through them before, but...
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This process was initiated in 2017, certainly surrounding the discussions of the interchange, but in specifically discussing the establishment of a plan and project area, there are two phases to it. The first phase is the eligibility study phase, which was undertaken in early 2018, and that required public meetings before both the agency and the City Council, and as Board of County Commissioners at that time as well, because it is a multi-jurisdictional project area. After those findings were made, the agency was instructed to begin the planning process, and that was about February of 2018. So, from February until the agency considered the plan for approval in December of 2018, all of that time was undertaken to draft the plan, have the consultant prepare the economic feasibility study, obtain the marketing analysis, and then vet that through a series of workshops that included both City Council, PDA, and Board of County Commissioners during that process.
So, you've obviously put together, you're one of the leading urban renewal attorneys in the states, for sure. Is this, have we pushed this process through? Is this a normal time process? Is it extended? What, help me understand if we've been...
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's been my experience that every project has its own internal timeline, but for, in comparison, I would say that this process has not been pushed through, it's been elongated, in fact, making sure that, you know, crossing Ts and dotting Is and bringing all of the public entities involved to the table to have the discussion. So, no, I don't think that this process has been very, very fast. I think six to nine months from beginning eligibility study to completion of a project area is, can be pretty standard, but again, it's so driven by the circumstances in the community, and there's a number of variables in it.
Sorry to block you down on the next TIF district somewhere in the state that you're gonna be asked to work on to six to nine months.
Yeah.
I didn't mean to do that, I realize that just happened. Okay, I, any other questions, I'll stop talking. Thank you, Megan, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Then, let's see, I declare the public hearing closed. There is no action to happen at this meeting tonight. There will be an ordinance that will be planned for the next meeting, which will be May, May 2nd. And so, that's when the action for this will be taken. Thank you. Agenda item number seven, as I mentioned, had was been pulled from the agenda, so we'll move on to agenda item number eight. Acceptance request, sell of fireworks, June 24 through July 4, 2019. Council may wish to consider a request from Brad Winters for an exception to the following: A, I'll go ahead and wait.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you. Okay, I think we can go ahead and start over. Agenda item number eight, acceptance request, sell of fireworks, June 24 through July 4, 2019. Council may wish to consider a request from Brad Winters for an exception through the following: A, City Code 15.10.100, time of sell of fireworks, to allow the sell of fireworks, June 24, 2019, through July 4, 2019; and B, City Code 15.10.120, sell only at temporary firework stands, to sell from a tent that is slightly larger than 200 square feet. Fire department staff recommends denial of the request. Staff is concerned that multiple problems will arise by allowing a business to sell fireworks that cannot be legally used for several days. The city of Pocatello discharge dates for fireworks are June 28 through July 6. Councilwoman Adamson.
Mayor, we have received many comments over the years and complaints about fireworks and those types of things, and I believe that our fire department staff has the best interest of the community in mind, and therefore, I move that we follow their recommendation and deny the request.
Second. Mr. Mayor, I think there's two issues here. One is discharge of fireworks, and the other is where the seller chooses to vend them from. And I don't think that's our business. I think we should deny the request to sell early and allow the tent.
Okay, so are you...
I'd ask to amend the motion.
Are you asking, you want to amend the motion? If she doesn't want to amend her motion, are you looking to put a subsequent motion on the table? You could ask her if she wants to amend it.
It's up to the motion maker.
Buy it for Kate, cut it in half.
Okay.
Okay?
Actually, could we have our fire department staff come and comment on, on the tent issue?
We can, but do we need to, before we do that, do we need to have a motion on the floor, or no?
No, you can continue discussions.
Okay.
We have, we have a motion and a second right now, the discussion was...
Right, we neither, yeah, you can continue with information gathering, but then you need to either move on, or vote on the motion that's on the table, substitute it, or bifurcate the issues into two separate motions.
Okay, and would you come up here, Mr. Holmes?
Lots of choices.
We've got all kinds of choices, we don't know what we're doing up here yet, so, figure that out.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Andy Holmes, Pocatello Fire Department, Assistant Chief of Public Safety and Director of the Fire Prevention Bureau. Now, are we just addressing the second issue here?
We have, you've been asked to come up to answer a question, who had the question?
If you could just comment as to why, I guess, give us further information on what your recommendation was, I guess you can speak to both, if that's okay.
Okay, my recommendation was to, not to allow the exception of the tent, based on roughly five or six issues. First of all, it's, it does go against our code not to allow temporary, the sale of fireworks from other buildings or structures other than temporary firework stands. Another issue is that if he wants to sell out a temporary membrane structure, is what we call it, he'll have to go through the, not only the IFC, but the IBC, which is the International Building Code, and they do have some requirements as well as us. One of them is that any structure greater than 120 square feet will require a building permit. This comes out of IBC 3103.1.2. He will have to adhere to the occupant load for this temporary structure, which has a mercantile factor of 60 square foot per person. He maxes his tent out to 750 square feet. That really wouldn't give him more than 12 people to come in and buy fireworks.
So, Andy, you're saying to set up a tent, he needs to have a building permit?
According to the codes. It's a dog-eat-dog world with the codes, right?
I've actually never heard of people camping in a tent, getting a business or a building permit.
There are exceptions. There, it gets pretty complicated, and that's why, this is something that we have not seen before, at least I haven't seen it, and so I'm not comfortable giving the exception at this point, maybe in the future after further study, but from my research that I've done, it looks like a pretty complicated process. There's also some structural verification that we need after they put the tent up, and that could require some, some more expense for the vendor to provide that. Another issue is that our, another point of our code says that no fireworks will be discharged within 25 feet of a fireworks stand, and if you have a tent, that distance increases to 100 feet. So, kind of contraindicates our current code in that respect.
Okay. And then the, did you want him to speak to both?
Sure.
The, the day of, he's dying to speak up there, you can tell, but...
Just briefly, why we would not want to have fireworks sold prior to the date that line in our ordinance?
The biggest reason is, once again, it contraindicates our code because there's both the sell and the usage of fireworks, and it does not address the dates of usage, which, it opens the, the selling of four and a half days before it's legal to sell fireworks, which sends a... was sends a confusion into the citizens as to what, why we would do that. I, I don't know why we would want to do that to begin with. Another issue is that this is an intensely competitive market at that time, and I can really see this being construed as favoritism towards a certain exception, and I really don't feel that, I want to feel all the calls that will be coming in, that I know would be coming in from other vendors that are expressing their displeasure with this exception.
Okay, any other questions?
No, but I do have a comment. Based on this information presented from our fire department staff, I feel most comfortable following our ordinance and also not opening ourselves up to concerns of favoritism, so I would leave my motion as stands.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to hear from Mr. Winters, who's requested this exception.
Brad, come on up here.
Absolutely. Thank you for hearing my comments, Mr. Mayor and City Council. As for the tent request, I see some of the issues that possibly could come from that, so I will go with whatever the city decides on that. The sales dates are the bigger issue here. I understand the fact that you're saying you don't want five, he doesn't, the fire department doesn't want fireworks sold on dates that they can't be lit. Is that, that's my understanding is what he's claiming, correct? First off, I just want to say, don't want to cause any hard feelings, retaliation possibly or anything like that with some issues that I'm going to comment on here. Back in December of 2000, well, the last two Decembers, from the 26th through the 31st during New Year's, fireworks are only legal on New Year's, even New Year's Day, according to the city code. Well, an exception was granted by this city council to allow family fun fireworks, to sell fireworks on the 26th, 27th, 28th, 29th, and 30th here in Pocatello, and those adult, those days are also days that fireworks are not allowed to be lit. So, in my opinion, it seems that there's favoritism towards that versus not allowing these out this time, for this exception.
Okay, any other questions?
I have another question for our fire department staff.
We need you back up here.
Could you speak to what the fire danger is in July versus December from an errant firework lighting a fire?
Well, it's considerably, did you say December versus Ju- July?
July.
Considerably less, and much more, at least is the fire department comfortable allowing exceptions in the middle of winter than in the middle of our highest fire danger season.
Thank you.
Okay, any other...
Did I understand, Mr. Winters, to say that he's withdrawing the request for the tent?
Yes, sir.
He said he would withdraw if that's what the council...
Okay.
Thank you. I think we won't have you back up here, but we might. Okay, so council, we have a motion on the floor right now to deny the request on both accounts. The date of selling of fireworks and also the tent, which sounds like may not be an issue at this point anyway, although it's still the part of the motion, and the motion was by Adamson, seconded by Lurick. Is there any other discussion? Connie, could you please call the room?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item nine, Declaration of Surplus Property. Council may wish to declare the following items as surplus. The items to be considered as surplus are not needed by the, by any department within the city. A, Information Technology Department. Items identified that were once used in the city's Video Services Department, which closed September 30, 2018. If declared as surplus, staff recommends donating the property to the nonprofit group Portnoy Valley Access Media as possibly discussed at the September 13, 2018 council work session. B, Public Transit Department, 2005 Optima Bus, 2005 Starcraft Bus, and 2010 Aerobus. The vehicles are no longer capable of being put into service, and if declared as surplus, staff recommends selling buses to Pacific Recycling. C, 2019 City Auction. Council may wish to declare the items identified as surplus property to be sold at the city's annual auction on May 11, 2019. City departments admitted list of items that they consider surplus as they were reviewed by other departments, and I, the items to be considered as surplus are not needed by any other departments within the city.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we affirm the Declaration of Surplus Properties, A, B, and C.
Second.
Thank you. We have a, a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Manon. Connie, could you please call the room?
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 10, Utah Transit Authority Donation of Buses Transit. Council may wish to accept Public Transit's staff recommendation to require the donation of five 2006 Optima Transit coaches from Utah Transit Authority, subject to legal department review. Staff anticipates the acquisition, will be, will extend the current fleet minimal, minimally for five years if approved, and extend, extended use of, use will be for parts of the staff, parts, or if staff determines the buses are an improvement over the existing fleet, such will be replaced.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I don't care who does it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approval of agenda item number 10, the Utah Transit Authority Donation of Buses to the Transit Department, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the room?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, 2000, or 2405 Garrett Way Buildings Project Phase Two. Council may wish to accept recommendations of Sanitation Department staff for phase two of the 2405 Garrett Way Building Remodel Project. The recommendations are: A, authorize the mayor to execute a change order contract between Construction Services Incorporated and the city of Pocatello in the amount of $380,487, subject to legal department review, and if approved, B, authorize the amount of $24,502 project budget deficiency from Sanitation Department reserves to be part of the May 2019 amendments. Phase two remodel cost has been budgeted by sanitation, and the building will be used to wash and repair sanitation carts, containers, and vehicles.
Mr. Mayor?
Manon?
I move that we approve agenda item number 11, Part A, Part B, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Manon and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the room?
Manon?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 12, Cooperative Purchasing Program Contract Fleet Management. Council may wish to approve a contract with Houston Galveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program, H-GAC-BY, to allow the city to participate in a cooperative purchasing program in which they can piggyback competitively, competitively bid contracts in an effort to increase efficiencies and procurement.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Lurick?
I move that we approve a contract with Houston Galveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program, H-GAC-BY, to allow the city to participate in this cooperative purchasing program in which they can piggyback competitively bid contracts, and there's no legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. You do not, I want to be clear, want the legal department to review that.
You can't get more confident.
I have a feeling they already have. Connie, could you please call the room?
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 13, Piggyback Bid, Street Sanitation Water Vehicles. Council may wish to consider the following piggyback bids, and if they are accepted, authorize the mayor to sign the necessary documents, subject to legal department review. The piggyback bids are: A, Streets, National Joint Powers Alliance, NJPA Sourcewell Contract with Kenworth Sales Company for the purchase of a 2020 Kenworth T800 Heavy Haul Truck in the amount of $145,124.29; and B, Sanitation, National Joint Powers Alliance, NJPA Sourcewell Contract with Rush Truck Centers, Rush Enterprise, for the purchase of a, of a roll-off truck comprised of a 2020 chassis and a 2019 hoist in the amount of $175,645.66; and C, Water, 2014 City of Pocatello Street Department bid with Western States, Western States Equipment for the purchase of a 2019 Caterpillar 289D Compact Truck Loader and, in the amount of Funds are available in each department's 2019 fiscal year budget.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the piggyback bids, A, B, and C.
Second.
Man, that was a slow second. We have a motion, we have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the room?
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 14, Piggyback Bid Idaho Asphalt Supply Company. Council may wish to consider the following piggyback bids from Idaho Asphalt Company Incorporated, and if accepted, authorize the mayor to sign the necessary documents, subject to legal department review. Sealing oil for the 2019 paving program, 40 tons CRS2 sealing oil at $475 per ton, $492.15 FOB job site. 11 tons CSS-1H-DIL 50/50, $390 per ton, $407.15 FOB job site. And 14 tons Quick Seal 50 at $390 per ton, $407.15, $407.15 FOB job site. Total price is approximately $28,750. Funds are available in the street operations fiscal year 2019 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
I move we approve agenda item number 14, Piggyback Bid for Idaho Asphalt Supply, and authorize the mayor to sign it, subject to legal department review, with funds secured in the FY 2019 budget.
Second.
I got Cheatham on that one.
He deserves it.
He deserves one of that. We have a motion by Manon and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the room?
Manon?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 15, FAA Grant Airport Improvement Program. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign, subject to legal, legal department review, documents related to a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, under the Airport Improvement Program. A, FAA Grant application in the amount of $4,687,500, and if approved, B, complete the list, listed projects according to the FAA specifications and regulations on the, on a cost reimbursable, reimbursable basis. A required match of 6.25% for the total project cost, $312,500, will be funded using airport passenger facility charge funds. Projects under the grant will be rehabilitation of the FBO apron, terminal apron, and heavy aircraft parking apron, as well as electrical vault upgrades, replacing of the rotating beacon, and rehabilitation of the north end of taxiway A.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move to approve agenda item number 15, the FAA Grant for Airport Improvement Program, authorizing the mayor to sign, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a, we have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick, and we have a question, it sounds like.
Would our airport staff indicate to us what the timeframe is for this project?
Please. She is super excited about being called up here, I can tell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kristi Heinz, Airport Management Assistant. The project will start as soon as we get funds. Grant funds probably won't come in until July. We are phasing the project because part of it is down at the end of the ramp near the BLM, and we do not want to affect or interfere with fire season. So it will be phased into several phases. That phase actually will not take place until next spring, so that that work down there will not occur during fire season. So it will start late summer, finish up next spring.
Thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you. We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the room?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 16, Trade and Purchase of Firearms Police. Council may wish to consider the Pocatello Police Department's PD, PPD recommendation, and accept a quote from Salt Lake Wholesale Blue Label Glock Dealer for law enforcement for the following firearms. The firearms will be used by members of the Pocatello Police Department. A, trade in 11 older Glock 21 firearms, and if approved, B, purchase 12 new Glock 17 handguns. Staff can purchase the new Glock handguns at a discounted rate of $262.26 per gun. Funds are available in the police department's fiscal year 2019 budget.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the trade and purchase of firearms for the police department as outlined in A and B.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnston and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the room?
Johnston?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 17, Trade In and Purchase of Vehicle Request. Police, Council may wish to consider the Pocatello Police Department's PPD recommendation to trade in a 2013 Smart Car to Philmeter Toyota for $3,000, and if approved, authorize the purchase of a 2018 Toyota Yaris in the amount of $13,703. Includes trade-in. The vehicle will be used by the city's PPD parking attendant. Funds are available in the police department's fiscal year 2019 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Manon?
I move we approve agenda item number 17, with the trade-in and purchase of the vehicle request by the police department.
Second.
We have a motion by Manon and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the room?
Manon?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 18 is an ordinance, an ordinance amending Pocatello Municipal Code Title 15, Chapter 42, Wireless Communication Towers and Facilities. By amending Sections 15.42.030 definition, 15.42.040, types of WCF permits required, 15.42.050 wireless facility permit process, 15.42.060 permit review time periods, 15.42.070 modifications of, collections of antennas, DAS, and small cells, 15.42.080 tower sharing collection, preferred tower locations and standards, and 15.42.090 zoning districts and land use to incorporate current federal communication standards.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move the ordinance, agenda item number 18, be read only by Title 15, placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the room?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, revising Title 15, Chapter 42, Wireless Communications Towers and Facilities of the revised and compiled ordinances of the city of Pocatello, specifically Chapters 15.42.030 definitions, 15.42.040 types of WCF permits required, 15.42.050 wireless facility permit process, 15.42.060 permit review and time, permit review time periods, 15.42.070 modifications or co-locations of antennas, DAS, and small cells, 15.42.080 towers... of antennas, DAS, and small cells, 15.42.080 tower sharing, colocation, preferred tower locations and standards, and 15.42.090 zoning districts and land use to incorporate current federal communications standards, providing that all other sections of 15 -- chapter 15.42 shall remain in full force and effect, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item 19, Discussion Items. This time has been set aside to hear discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the starting of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's a 15 minutes total for this agenda item and three minutes per person. We will go ahead and get started. John Hoffman.
Any deciding?
You already did.
Yeah, you did right here. We got you. John Hoffman, 216 South 16th, Pocatello, Idaho. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for letting me take a couple minutes. My whole life, I've been taught by my parents and by others that one voice can make a difference, and I believe that. I actually got a degree and taught at Pocatello High School in government, and in that time, I taught my students that one voice makes a difference. I believe that wholeheartedly. I've taught my children that same thing. And last night, I went to a meeting, a member of a group of about 2,000 people that last night was supposed to be represented by a friend of mine named Steve McCurdy, and his voice was at this meeting at the Pocatello Historic Preservation Commission. And his voice was there to make a difference and represent our group. And for a number of weeks, he's been trying to find out how to get on that agenda so that our voice as a group of 2,000 members could make a difference and represent our group. And I found out last night that in Pocatello, compared to some of the other cities around the state, you can't do that at that meeting. And he was denied, even though being told he would be allowed to find out how to get on the agenda, he was denied access to be on the agenda. And in my opinion, it was kind of a travesty. He went before the proper -- he went for three or four weeks to try to find out how to get on the agenda. My understanding is the Historic Preservation Commission, I don't know how that works exactly, but I'm coming before you in a nutshell to find out how that works, how to make our voices heard. This isn't a big conspiracy. We just want to put input as a public to make our voices heard and to make a difference. We want, in the proper manner, to get our voices heard, and that's what we wanted to do last night, but at the end of the meeting, we were completely shut off and felt kind of like we weren't heard. So I still want to believe in that. There's many cities around that have Historic Preservation Commissions, and they allow their people's voices to be heard, and I think that's an important process. I believe in it. It was done in the proper way. It was calm and collective, and Steve represents a large amount of people, about 2,000 people, that really have some input in our community and believe in our community and just want their voice to be heard. So I'm hoping that the city council and you, Mayor, can give us input on how we get on the agenda so that we can make our voices heard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Heather Deselkun.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm here before you respectfully to address a broken process within the City of Pocatello. Last night, I attended the Historic Preservation Commission meeting. I wanted to express my objections to the HPC's process that disallows public comment and to support an individual who has been attempting to be heard in a public comment period or to get on the agenda for weeks. Last night, when he was attempting to speak to the group at the end of their meeting, the chair conferred with a city employee and promptly adjourned the meeting. All commissioners then gathered their belongings, city employees included, and walked out on us. The manner in which I and others in attendance were dismissed for trying to have our voices heard was inexcusable, in my opinion. I can't adequately communicate how angered and frustrated it made me feel. I was there to express my disappointment in the process and to respectfully ask the commission to consider changing it. Not one member of the commission nor one city employee attempted to have any dialogue with me or any other member in the audience. This process is broken. Elected and appointed decision makers ought to be both open and committed to considering public input in the decision process. Citizens often have valuable knowledge and information to contribute. I don't know where the fault is, and I don't think it matters. I don't know because there's been no dialogue, but I do know that a request to be heard in a public comment period is not unreasonable and ought to be the standard practice. Before I came to last night's meeting, I randomly called three Idaho cities, and this has been confirmed by the ISJ today. All had provisions providing public comment in the Historic Preservation Commission meetings. Why doesn't Pocatello allow this? While I honestly believe there's been a breakdown in communication, the message I received last night is that of disdain for public input. Those who walked out did a grave disservice to the community by shutting down public comment, one of the most common and basic exercises of our first amendment rights. What I experienced and observed last night, no citizen -- excuse me, no citizen should be subject to, is a poor reflection on our city. I'm asking you respectfully to please address this matter immediately, fix this process, open up dialogue with the concerned parties. It's really, in my mind, pretty simple and honestly just common sense. Citizens who believe they've been shut out of a process, especially one that's important to them, will not simply go away. They will look for other venues in which to voice their dissent. Help make public input and comment at the Historic Preservation Commission meetings possible. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Stephen McCurdy.
Dear Blatt, councilmembers, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for staying to the bitter end, and thank you especially for listening to me this evening. My name is Steve McCurdy. I started the group Save Pocatello High School. I'm from South Jordan, Utah, but I am a past and hopefully a future citizen of Pocatello, Idaho. I represent a group of over 1,900 petitioners, these are Pocatello residents and graduates of Pocatello High School, intent on saving the historic architecture of Pocatello High School. A month ago, I tried to appear before the Historic Preservation Commission to voice opposition to the school board's plan for a new multimillion dollar Pocatello High School Administrative Office and entry, a plan that many believe is unnecessary and will diminish the school's architectural beauty. However, as you know, I was told that it would be illegal for me to speak, and as a result, I was prevented from voicing the concern of those 1,900 people in the major past without hearing any opposition. Last night, and this is what I would have read last night, I tried to share these comments with the Historic Preservation Commission, and again, I was not heard. The commission ended the meeting and walked out. If that is the policy of the commission, to not allow opposing viewpoints to be heard, I am here tonight to ask that you revise those policies, that you make all discussions of certificates of appropriateness open meetings, and that you allow concerned citizens to speak at those meetings. As a fact-finding body whose singular job it is to see that the community's patrimony of historical buildings is preserved and maintained in the best possible way, the Historic Preservation Commission should be seeking more information, not less. If this process is legal, it is seriously flawed and should be changed or improved. Serving the community demands that the commission hear relevant information and concerns. For weeks, I have been asking these questions, how to go before the commission, how we can change this process if necessary. I understand that the plan for Pocatello High School's Glass Commons area will soon be announced. If the process plays out as it has thus far, once again, the Historical Preservation Commission will not hear dissenting voices and concerns, and the community will once again not have an opportunity to share important and relevant information. Without this meaningful input, a certificate of appropriateness will likely once again be granted based on incomplete, misleading, and sometimes false information. At some time in the future, I hope the Historic Preservation Commission will be willing and will value the public enough to listen to their constituents. We ask that the city council bring integrity back to the process and open up the process to public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate your attendance and the time you spent, and we will be reaching out. With that, council, I'd like to thank you for your work today. It has indeed been a long day. It started early and it's ending late, and so I appreciate your patience and your work here tonight. So thank you very much, and with that, we are adjourned.